Good evening.
Hello.
They should be able to hear you.
Hello, Mark. It's Robert. Everyone?
Robert, I just sent you a message.
Okay. Hey, Roy.
Hi, Bob.
Let me get my, check my video. Of course, nothing works. Of course, nothing works.
You should be able to see everyone.
Yeah.
You can see clearly?
Yeah, this is nice.
Okay.
I got your book.
It's like a flat screen, right?
Hey, Roy, how are you feeling? Been a while.
Good.
Good.
Moving along.
Thank God. Very good. All right, let me get situated here because I got 14 different things I gotta look at just to get through the meeting. So I will get situated. I'll be right there.
You're everything okay?
Yeah, it's been fade away, bro.
No. And if you, no, it shouldn't fade away because you're on.
Yeah, and when it's over, I can just close it.
I'm right upstairs. Let me know if you have any problem. Yeah, you shouldn't. I was in meeting.
Okay.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening, loud and clear, sir.
Matthew Moronis, good evening, everyone.
Good evening. I see you. We hear you.
Hi.
We start at seven, so we will be back.
Oh, we start at seven? It says six.
Well, it takes us 6:30 to get situated, get logged on, and get.
Well, that's a good idea. I've struggled at times to get on, so.
Yeah, so this way you're on. Now you could just mute and shut the video, relax, and come back on.
Mr. Moss, are you, are you chairing this meeting?
No, I'm hosting but not chairing. Robert's chair.
I'm the chair, sir.
Robert.
Collegio.
Collegio, Mr. Collegio.
Yes, Robert.
How do I get to see Mr. Collegio? Let's see here.
Let's see, just gotta, I gotta just start my video. Here I am.
Are you handsome devil? And you're trying to be clandestine about it.
No, no, I'm trying to get situated. I gotta get a lot of pieces of.
Mr. Collegio, who do you represent? Oh, you're the chair of CB2?
Yeah.
God bless you. God bless you for your conservative town community.
Thank you.
Hey, Robert.
Sure.
This is for you.
No, I was just watching that news. The poor guy.
That's for me.
This is for me. No, this is mine.
I know, I saw that.
That poor guy got hit last night. What a shot. He was just on the news. Oh, my God.
Yeah, that was. Multiple fractures in the nose, right?
Man, really.
Santoro, Collegio.
Lisi.
If you're gonna do that, I'm gonna do this.
Yeah, they said if Chapman had pitched that ball, that guy could have really been critical condition.
I mean, not a.
This was '94.
Yeah, but it's a big difference. 110, you know?
Yeah.
Man, oh, man.
Yeah, if it hits your nose, I don't know if it matters how fast it's coming in.
It's true. That's true. Poor guy, he looked, his nose, his eyes, his whole face was swollen. Just was watching on TV.
Oh, he was on TV?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He said he feels fine, except he's got a couple of bruises, you know?
That's one tough kid. He was down for a while, but then he got up and he walked off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, let me get my iPad, my iPhone, so I can get the documents in front of me, and we can do this in a professional and orderly manner. So I shall return. Roy, how are you doing? You all right, Roy?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good.
Who's joining us from the city? Who's representing the city tonight?
We have, we have an agenda. There's a presentation. I forget the individual's name. When I get my iPad, I'll tell you. I'll be right back. Let me just get everything.
Hello. Hi, Roy Freddy. Hey, how you doing, buddy? Long time no see. How you feeling?
Mr. Juta, how are you? Steven, how are you?
The collegio.
Fred Juta, site for sore eyes. Matt Moronis.
Hey, Matt.
Who is this guy? Who is this guy?
Young man.
What the hell are you doing here?
Nice to see you.
What are you doing here?
I was invited, so here I am. As a husband, Fred, as a husband, you don't get invited to too many things anymore, you know?
You noticed that, right, Matt?
Yeah.
You can come, you can come to our meetings every month. You're extending invitation, I'll send you.
Well, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fred, did you sell your house?
Not yet.
Yeah, I'm trying to sell mine, too.
Where are you gonna go?
I bought in Palm Beach.
Oh, nice.
Good, okay.
All right, whereabouts?
I'm here 30 years. I'm in my house. Time to go.
Yeah, look, look what that building on the corner from you. Are you kidding me? Wow.
Well, for me, it's about four blocks away, so, but.
Yeah, that's true, too. Yeah, right, right, right.
It's irrelevant. I mean, it's a place, the wrong venue.
Yeah.
The wrong structure.
Yep, well, city planning for you. So when do you think you'll be leaving?
As soon as I get an offer I can't refuse.
Ocean, ocean view in Palm Beach?
I'm about five houses from the beach.
Nice.
From the ocean.
All right, nice.
How did you find that one?
Well, luckily, I bought it, I bought it 18 months ago.
Oh, good.
Well, and now, now everything is untouchable on the island.
Yeah, you think?
Untouchable.
Yep, it really is. Every one of those houses on A1A is untouchable, yeah.
Yeah, I was told. They give me magnificent offers if I didn't get it. But I gotta see what I'm doing here.
You're on, you're on the street that I drive down, I think, what are you, not Cromo Circle?
It's farview places, right? You know, bears off, yes.
You're there many years also, right?
Yeah, I think like 16 years. I'm up there. I can't believe it.
Oh.
But here we are. How much, we gotta, how much of your family is going with you?
Myself and my lovely wife.
That's it?
That's it.
There you go. Palm Beach, nice, beautiful area.
Well, it's another world. Once you get over that bridge, another world.
Yeah, tell me about it. I don't know. What's your thoughts of people moving to New Jersey?
Say that again?
What's your thoughts of people moving to New Jersey?
Ah, you go from the fire, from the, let's say, from the fire into the frying can you go.
Okay. Sounds like the plan. All right. So, anyway.
In fact, they were, they had something on Bloomberg today. New Jersey cumulatively, cumulatively, you pay the most taxes of any state in the Union.
Really?
Uh huh.
Oh, all right. That's good to know.
And then they had Murphy on trying to justify it and saying how wonderful everything is.
Yeah, right. We got one up in Albany the same way.
Oh, my God.
Yep. I don't know.
Well, you heard Giuliani's son is gonna run?
No, wait, I know.
He announced, he announced this morning.
Oh, good. All right. We just hope everybody does it. I think this election year here in New York is just so important as to where we put where, you know.
It's a pivot point, no doubt about it.
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I know you.
There's Mr. Zaboyansky over there. Steve, smile. You look mad. You're muted, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, I have Mr. DeLuca on the phone who can't get into access to the Zoom meeting.
Did he, did he register to sign up as you did? There's a little.
He's got a link from Mr. Derago.
All right, so it's, does he?
He could see us, but you, well, maybe there's a mute button down at the bottom. Do you see?
There's a mute on the bottom, bottom left.
If there's a line through it.
Guys, if he's an attendee, he cannot speak. Only participants can speak.
Right.
Oh, 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 so he can't speak? Can you, well, can he hear? He's gotta be able to hear, no?
Sure.
Oh, you can hear, but you can't speak, Mr. DeLuca, they tell me.
You can hear and see.
Is that correct, Mr. President, Mr. Chairman? He can't speak?
That's correct, unless he signed up to see it.
Yeah, unless you signed, you signed up in advance, sir. He did sign up, he said.
Then if you got the link from Deborah, then you should be able to log right on, and if you could see us, and then there's a mute button if you are not excluded from the list. Am I correct, Mark?
Sorry, I'm on the phone with, with Deborah. Give me a second, Robert.
Okay.
Can you hear them speaking on through the phone? Uh, no. I see we have 23 participants.
Yeah, we do. We do.
I do not see Mr. DeLuca, no.
Good evening, Doctor. How are you?
There's another gentleman who's saying, Mr. Lobasso, he signed up and he's not able to connect.
I'm here. I remembered.
Thank you. I was gonna email you today, but I knew.
Debbie and Antoinette did, thank you.
I didn't want you to yell at me. We're waiting for Mark. He's our Zoom coordinator with Debbie. He'll give out the instructions. He might just have to log on again if they signed up to speak.
Yeah, sometimes that works.
But if they could see the video on the bottom left, depending on what kind of computer they have, if they have a Windows computer, it's on the bottom left. They have an iPad. It might be on the top right. The buttons for muting and video and audio.
Well, whoever's idea, whatever idea was to do a half hour early was right on the money here.
It takes us a half hour. Sometimes it takes us an hour to get situated.
You know?
With dinosaurs, you know, a bunch of 13-year-olds.
Right, try to ask my son to help me. I gotta negotiate, you know? Negotiate everything. So we start early, like four o'clock, early bird special. That's what they do in Palm Beach. Palm Beach, they eat dinner at four o'clock afternoon, 3:30.
You have to look forward to that.
Yeah, takes, takes a day, takes a day to get used to. If you go to Benny's on the beach, you'll eat lunch every day. It's like work.
Is there a mute button? Did you see that mute button in the bottom left? On the Zoom, on the Zoom screen, not on your computer screen. Well, I have my neighbor calling me also with the same problem.
Sorry, Robert. What was your question?
Well, there's a bunch of comments in the chat box. Apparently, people are having difficulty logging on.
Now Letitia can't get in.
Hold on, everybody. This is a webinar. Some people are panelists, who you can see on your screen. The rest are attendees. You can view and listen. You're not in as a panelist. If you signed up to speak at the appropriate time, we'll grant you the rights to be, the Zoom rights to be able to speak. But you are in, if you're chatting with us, you are in the meeting.
Letitia Muro cannot, cannot get in.
But they're in.
Yeah, they're in, yeah. You're, you can see the chat, Mark. I don't have to repeat.
Right, they're not panelists.
Right.
I don't know that, I'm the host, not the chair. Robert, are you gonna, probably not. This is, if this were an in-person public hearing, registered speakers are allowed to ask questions. Robert, do I have that right?
That's correct. If they signed up on the clipboard, and so they were on our list from Saturday, and I have that list that Debbie gave us, we'll use that as our playbook.
Right, so I believe, who's that, Tom? I believe the answer to your question is that if you signed up to speak, you can ask questions when you're, when it's your turn. Otherwise, members of the public are attending, not participating.
And if you do have questions and you did not sign up to speak, if you put your questions in the chat box, they will be addressed by the board when we put the final record together. Hi, Mike Lanza, how are you?
Hello, how are you?
Fine, thank you, sir. Jerry, how are you?
How you doing, Rob?
Good. I don't know who said that, but good.
Teresa is okay. I see Teresa, Freddie's here, Roy. Steve is here, Santoro's here.
Anthony, that'll be late.
Was that Mr. Lanza?
It was in the chair, twisting around, yes.
Ah, Mr. Lanza, God bless you. Matt Moronis, long time no see.
He'll be back.
How are you, there, young man?
Thank you, thank you. You know, I just hit a big birthday. That means the world to me.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, sir.
Good to see you.
Likewise, likewise. How's Dad doing?
Everybody's well.
How was, how was the vintage last year? How was the vintage?
The, you know what? I couldn't tell you. I've been working for 15 months straight, 27 days a week.
Oh, correct, correct. I, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't tell you. I can't even remember to tell you the last time I had a drink of wine was.
God bless you for what you do. God bless you for what you do, Mr. Lanza.
Thank you, you too.
Hi, Debbie, can you hear me? Hi, Deb. Debbie, is Andy Levinson gonna be here tonight?
Deborah's having a tough time unmuting. Deborah, I asked you to unmute. You have to.
Debbie, you're on mute. No, I can't hear her.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Teresa, how are you?
Good.
We have about six minutes before we start, so we have time to get coordinated with our technology.
Oh, come on.
Dave, I have a flag, or the pledge tonight, okay?
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question from a neighbor that they pre-registered that does not qualify them to speak. Mr. Moss?
That's correct. If they didn't sign up to speak.
If they pre-registered, they will be, their audio will be enabled when it's their turn to speak.
Right.
Yes.
It's like if you're in a public meeting in person, they'll be recognized at the appropriate time.
Okay.
Hi, Roseanne.
When?
Teresa, when we get started, it's, of course, we do have to, we have a vote tonight, so we need to, I wanna make sure we have a forum, so you'll let me know. You're on mute, Teresa.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, when we go toward the end, when we enter the presentation and we have the public session, and we take, at the end of, we take our vote. When you take attendance at the top of the meeting, I just wanna make sure we have a forum for this. Thank you. All right, Deb, I got you. Go ahead. You gotta switch computers and go to a laptop. Gotcha, okay. Mark, Debbie has problems on her computer.
How many registered speakers are there?
I don't see that tally, sir.
Does any?
There's a lot. There's a list. There's a list.
Is it 10, 20, 30?
Maybe 10 or 15, maybe, maybe not even that much. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we've done this before, so everybody, we're gonna, I'm trying to, I'll do it as organized as I can, and the board members understand, so they're just gonna have to follow my lead, that's all. Otherwise, we'll never, it will never work. It's sort of like a controlled chaos. Vavashkin, how are you?
Crap, where'd that come?
You're on mute. Everybody's on mute. Frank, how are you, Frank?
Hello.
I saw Antoinette trying to connect, and she made it. Yes, Antoinette, are you there? Antoinette, I see her, but I can't hear her.
Nope, she's not on.
Yeah, I see her. I see her name. She's on. She's here. You'll have to excuse that link. That means one of you is texting because they got a problem. Hello, Lilian. Just letting you know. I don't wanna ignore anybody. Lilian, I didn't, I said hello. How are you? Good, okay. This'll be interesting.
Uh, Mr. Nenavaji, good evening, sir, Mr. President.
Hi, Robert. Dr. Raju, how are you?
Dr. Kalau, good to hear from you. Thank you very much. Hope you're okay.
I'm good, thanks.
You'll be, you'll be first up on the plate at my cue, all right?
Yes, sir.
You saw that email this morning. We'll take.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Board business makes sense. All right, we got another minute, since we're in Staten Island, we'll get an extra minute. Debbie's there, I see you. Debbie, can you hear us? Can you hear me? No, okay. Okay. All right, so Theresa will be our eyes and ears, and she's the only one that could hear all of us. I hear you. I hear you, but I can't, I hear you, you can't hear me. That's correct, right? But I could see you, so that's okay. And Antonette's on, I just wanted to make sure that I can.
There you go, Deborah.
Antonette, Deborah, you there, Deb?
No, it says you're not muted, but we can't hear you.
All right. Dr. Dolan's here. Okay, we'll take a ten. Julie, how are you?
How is that?
I see Julie there. All right, I hope everybody's got a lot of patience tonight, because, believe me, we're not. All right, it's 7:01, everyone. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, thank you. Okay. I hope everybody has the technology that can listen and hear us tonight, because we have, we have an agenda here. I'm going to go off the list for a few minutes, because I want to get to our feature presentation, which is the presentation on the homeless shelter, so I'm going to go out of order and conduct board business first, and then we will get to the presentation. We'll have public speakers. We will listen. We will control the, the, the speakers to two and a half minutes, and I'll repeat that momentarily. With that, Teresa, please take our roll call.
Okay. AJ.
Would everyone go off mute, please, because otherwise we won't be able to get an accurate record of attendance, and tonight is important that we have a correct tally. Thank you.
Boboskin.
Or raise your, raise your hand also, so I could see you. Teresa, I'll see them, right? Go ahead.
Boskin is here.
Bolzano, I see her name.
Here.
Antonette, oh, hi, Antonette, good. I'm glad to hear. Good, good.
Here, thank you.
Cognata.
I am here.
Thank God, good.
Robert, you're there.
I'm here.
Yamato.
Hey.
Yeah.
Dietrich Paney. Dolan.
Yeah.
Darmaz. Freeman.
Here.
Garlici.
Here.
Genovese. Fred.
Yeah.
Dr. Khalid.
I'm here.
Lilian.
Here.
Lanza.
Here.
Markowski.
Yeah.
McNamara. Mendy. Nina Vaji.
Here.
Pacifica. Haral. Raju.
Here.
Ruggiero.
Yeah.
Santoro.
Yeah.
Seminera.
Here.
Traub. I'm here. Biscio. Gattarico.
Yeah.
Zabinski.
Here. How are you?
Okay, good.
22 out of 30 something, so we're good.
Nice. So we're good to go. Very good. Thank you. Okay.
Robert, can I do a little first, because this is the first time you've been on a webinar?
Please, Mark.
So the board members, some elected officials, the presenters are panelists. Those are the people we see on the screen. Those are the people who can talk. Attendees, who are other members who are interested in viewing and participating in this meeting, are not able to be seen or heard right now. If you've signed up to speak, when it is, when you're selected, we will provide audio access to that. I know there are a few people who are asking that question. I just want to try to make that clear. So attendees will be called on, assuming they've registered to speak, will be called upon at the appropriate time, and access provided. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mark. And everyone else, I do, I do see the chat comments, and Mark does too, and so does Debbie. So I want to get the record as, as complete as possible. Obviously, I'm not able to read and address every comment, because otherwise I can't conduct the meeting at the same time. But everything, we will address one, everything one way or another, and you do have Deborah's email to the board, and to email her your questions or concerns to her. I just wanted to get that in the record. Okay. Having said that, motion to accept the proposed agenda tonight, which we circulated three times today. Frank, second?
Ready.
Fred, Fred?
Yeah.
Accepted. Thank you. Motion to accept the April full board meeting minutes that we had. Jerry, thank you. Frank, thank you. Accepted. Okay. The chair's report. So what I decided to do, not that I really have much to report anyway, because we were pretty, everything that I've been getting, the barrage of emails, as you see, I have Debbie pushing to all the board members, so you pretty much have the same stuff I have. The only difference was that I had gone to the Borough Board Meeting, which we have once a month, like this, it's virtual on Zoom or WebEx, I forget which one it was, and the last meeting typically, there's usually a subject that's discussed, and last month was on the DOT's master plan for the City of New York, and they will share the PowerPoint presentation with us, and when we do, we will share it with the full board like we always do, so everyone will be able to have all of the information. Now, if something comes your way, and you think that the board had some information, just let me know, and we will find out and get to the, find out what it is, and somehow get it, share it to all the board. So I just want everybody to know that. Okay, so as I said tonight, there was a revised agenda. I want to get through all the board business, and then we will have the presentation, the public discussion, and then the board will vote on, on the matter tonight at the end. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the nominating committee. Dr. Raju, who, for Joel Traub, who is not here tonight, he's the chair of the committee, the religious holiday, so I suppose him and Mendy are not here tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Raju to give us a status update of the nominating committee's activities for the month of April and May. Doctor?
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, board members. We met the nominating committee, which is Mendy, John, Joel, and myself. We met in the executive session, and we elected Joel as the chairman of the committee. So we have requested, we already got a few nominations, we're requesting people to send a nomination to any one of the members of the committee, and we will be meeting soon to consult all the nominations, and during the next meeting, which is June meeting of the board, we, nominating committee will nominate the people who are, who are, whose applications or nominations have been received, and also we will be seeking some floor nominations, and at that time, there will be election if needed. So please keep sending nominations to us, and so that we can have a viable, very good board, which we always had in community board number two, and thank you very much for the opportunity. On behalf of my board members, I want to thank you for giving the opportunity to be in the nominating committee.
Back to you, Robert. Thank you very much, Dr. Joe, and on behalf of the board, we appreciate all of the committee's efforts to follow the rules and bylaws, to make sure that we get through the June meeting in accordance with our regulations, and we can start September the way we're supposed to start. Thank you very much to you and the committee for all of your efforts. Thank you. Okay. All right, I'm going to jump into the presentation tonight, which is one of the main reasons why we're here. We have a presentation tonight, representative of New York City Department of Homeless Services and the Institute for Community Living, ICL. The social service provider will discuss Mayor de Blasio's plan to open a women's shelter at 1055 Highland Boulevard. Now, unfortunately, I don't have the list in front of me right now representing the applicant or the city, so if you're here, can you just go off mute, please, and raise your hand, so we can recognize you for the record?
Good evening. This is David Woodlock. I'm the CEO, I'm the CEO at ICL, and I don't see anybody from Department of Homeless Services yet, but.
David, I'm on. Erin Drinkwater.
There we go. Good to see you.
Nice to see you, David.
Is there Amanda, Amanda Nassner is here also?
Yes, Amanda's here as well.
Okay, so there's three people from the city and one from the applicant. Is that correct?
Dion Vega also from DHS.
Okay, very good. All right, so who will go first from either the city or the applicant? What is your choice?
I'm going to start us off tonight. My name is Erin Drinkwater. I'm deputy commissioner for intergovernmental and legislative affairs at Department of Social Services. I'm here with my colleagues Amanda and Diane, and then our representatives from ICL as well, who they'll have an opportunity to introduce themselves in just a little bit. Thank you all for making time on your busy agenda for us. As somebody who sits on my own local community board, I know how important our meetings are and how sensitive to time they are, because we often have very busy agendas. I want to start off tonight by talking a little bit about the mayor's bringing the tide plan. This plan is a comprehensive plan to address homelessness. It centers communities in regard to having a robust community outreach plan as we are citing shelters. The mayor made a commitment to cite 90 shelters across New York City to address the needs of homeless New Yorkers. For those who aren't aware, New York City has a right to shelter. This means that on any given night, if an individual comes to us seeking services, we provide them those services through a network of our nonprofit service providers, who I'll get into a little bit, and then ICL will certainly talk about their programs specifically. We have made great inroads in terms of this plan. We have cited nine, excuse me, 89 shelters. Forty-six of those shelters are currently opening and operating. And what we're looking to do through this plan is to open shelters in every community board across the city to make sure that individuals who are experiencing homelessness are able to be sheltered close to the networks of their support, whether that be religious institutions, friends and family, schools, jobs, et cetera. Currently, this community board has zero shelters. We know that individuals from Staten Island are experiencing homelessness, and they're placed in shelters across the city. So the opportunity to open this location at 1055 Highland Boulevard for women who are over the age of 50, with our provider, ICL, the very great opportunity to be able to connect individuals experiencing homelessness to the shelter that they need and the associated social services while they are our clients. I've mentioned that we've made great strides. We've opened 46 and announced on 89 of the shelters in terms of the mayor's plan. I want to put a little context into that plan. We've seen significant increases over homelessness with this administration place. We put a comprehensive plan in place to drive down evictions by instituting the first in the nation right to council program. So if you are facing eviction and housing court, the city is able to provide you free legal counsel to ensure that you're able to hopefully preserve your tenancy and not become evicted. We've also helped more than 165,000 New Yorkers move out of shelter or avoid entry into shelter through the creation of rental assistance vouchers and rebuilding housing programs. Additionally, we've transformed the haphazard shelter system, reducing the DHS shelter footprint. We have committed to closing commercial hotels, as well as what we refer to as clusters. So these are private apartments that are taken off of the affordable housing stock to be used as shelters. We've made a commitment to end both of those practices. We're near the completion of getting out of all of the clusters and returning those units back to the affordable housing stock for about 75% of our way onto that commitment, and we continue to make inroads on closing our commercial hotels, focused on getting families with children out of commercial hotels, because we know that they're much better suited in our tier-two shelters. We've also, in addition to reducing the footprint of the DHS shelter system, we've placed a great focus on our unsheltered neighbors in terms of increasing the number of outreach workers who are canvassing the streets, connecting and engaging with individuals who are experiencing homelessness on the street, and working to bring them inside into low threshold beds. In regards to this particular location, if there is an individual who needs shelter, for women in our system, they come to two central intake points. There's a central intake point in the Bronx, and there's one in Brooklyn. The women would arrive at that location, and they would apply for shelter. During that initial application, we learn a little bit about the women and the complexities and reasons that they might be experiencing homelessness. This could be as a result of, you know, family discord. It could be the disparity between rents and income. It could be something related to a mental health diagnosis. But our purpose in that about, that initial intake is to be able to then place an individual in a program shelter that's most suitable for that client, based on the experience of the provider, the social services that they have on site, to be able to quickly transition that individual back to permanent housing through the use of rental assistance and other tools. We always try to divert at every turn that we're able to. So if somebody comes to us and they might need rental assistant, or excuse me, rental arrears, we're able to process those rent arrears. We want to make sure that that transition from the experience of homelessness back to permanent housing is as quick as possible. And so the, the quickest thing is to avoid entry into shelter in the first place. But if in the event an individual is in need of our, our service and our care, we're able to provide them a shelter bed, but it's so much more than just a shelter bed. It's the robust social services that our providers engage in every day with the individual, working with them to get them connected to potential, you know, job training opportunities, services, on and off-site medical care, and so on. So with that, I'm going to pause, and I'm going to turn it over to David, the CEO of ICL, to talk a little bit about the social services program. And then if there are questions for the agency or ICL, happy to answer them, or if the board would like to take a different approach, happy to turn it back to you.
Thank you very much, Erin. David, just one second. I just want to remind everyone and our visitors, I want to welcome our guests, of course, here at the committee board too. But we are recording this particular session, and I have an obligation to let everyone know that we are recording it, and you have the option to either go on mute or just disconnect if people are uncomfortable with that, but we do need to have a public record of this. So I just wanted everybody to know that. So thank you very much.
Thank you for clarifying.
And I see Teresa, Dr. Khalid, I don't know if we caught him, but I just see him on my screen here now. If we got him on the attendance sheet. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Mr. Whitcock, go ahead, please.
Thank you, thanks. Well, good evening, everybody, and there are a few others of the ICL folks that are here also on the call who can fill in some details for you. I thought, I thought we might start telling you a little bit about ICL for those of you that may not be familiar with us, and then let some of the people a little closer to the, to the program level give you more of the details of that, about how we run our shelters. ICL is about a 35-year-old agency, started in, in Brooklyn. We had a presence in Staten Island for a number of years with Staten Island Behavioral Network, and currently run well over 100 supported housing beds in, in the Staten Island area. Across the city, we're in all five boroughs. We take care of about 10,000 people a year in a whole variety of settings, and about 2,500 people or so spend the night with us every night. Everything from homeless shelters to congregate sites that are supervised 24 hours a day into about 1,400 supported apartments, really across the city. So are, are quite expert at helping people move along and get the skills and access to services that they need. And in the last two years or so, have actually found permanent homes for just under 800. So our goal isn't to provide homeless services necessarily as much as it is to provide homes for people, and I think we've been really successful at that. We're accredited by a number of, of agencies, as you might guess, including, in this instance, the, the city and the state. We're accredited by the, a national association called CARF, and do wonderfully well, I'm happy to say, in all those evaluations year after year. So that, that's a little bit, and I'd be happy So that, that's a little bit and I'd be happy to answer any question you might have about ICL. But with that, I'm sure what you're more interested in hearing about a little bit about how we run our shelters and what some of the plans are for, for Highland Boulevard. So Pam, why don't you and Janine talk a little bit about that?
Sure. Thank you, David. So I will give a larger perspective about shelters and then I will turn it to Dr. Janine Cosley. She is the Senior Vice President who oversees all of our shelters. Pretty important in our approach is recognizing that people who are in need of shelter also are in need of compassionate, trauma-informed care. And our approach is to make sure that everybody who walks into our shelter is welcomed as a dignified person who is on their way to permanent housing and pulling the pieces of their lives that got broken apart while they were homeless. I know a lot of providers probably say that to you. I am really here to say that we walk that walk very seriously. We have our mission and motto, which is people get better with us. And we, we really adhere to that at a very deep level. So our staff are trained not only in what is typical case management, but also in counseling, motivational interviewing, seeing people from a whole health perspective and making sure that, as Erin was saying really well at the beginning, that we fulfill the promise of not only housing, but behavioral health, physical health, and, and hopefully especially for these women, reunification with their families and children. We are really proud to run several other shelters for women. Between our three other shelters, we work with about 400 women. And so I would also say that we are quite well skilled in understanding what the women bring to the shelter and what they are seeking. So there's probably a lot more I could say to that, but let me turn to Dr. Cosley. You are running all of our shelters. Perhaps you could elaborate on the specific model for Highland Boulevard and staffing pattern as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Hi, my name is Janine Cosley. I'm the Senior Vice President for Shelters and Transitional Services at ICL. As Pam and, and Mr. Woodlock explained, we have a whole array of services at ICL. Our Shelter Division right now has five shelters. We run the Tillery Street Women Shelter, the Elder Lane Women Shelter, the Two Bridges Shelter. Those three shelters are mental health shelters. We also have our newest shelter, which is the, the New Life Shelter located on Catherine Street downtown Manhattan. And that is a general pop shelter as well as the Borden Avenue Veteran Shelter. So all of our shelters take on a model of a, a trauma-informed approach, as Pam said. So we are trauma-informed. We really make sure that we are using trauma-informed care in all of our programming. We're also recovery-oriented, integrated health approach as well as a person-centered approach in all of our work. We have a whole array of supportive services on site along with the complimentary services that ICL provides, such as supportive housing, congregate housing. We have PROS programs. We work with a, with the Community Healthcare Network. We have a care coordination program. We have a whole array of services that, that actually complement the, the good work that our case managers and our social service staff are doing in the shelters. And we are able to provide housing with our own ICL supportive housing programs and have our clients also be involved in our clinics, in our PROS programs and in our care coordination programs. So to, to look at it as a one-stop shop, you might say, as where clients can come to ICL and come into shelter and get a whole array of services to help them with independence and recovery. Yeah, that's more what I wanted to say. Also, the Highland Park Shelter. So it is a 50-bed shelter located in Staten Island. And it is a general pop shelter and we have the whole array of supportive services at Highland, at Highland Park as well as some supportive services as case management and peers that will help complement maybe mental health needs and also some medical needs. We have the LPN on the staffing pattern as well. So knowing that our clients come to us with some, some pretty severe problems at some points, needing medical help, needing psych help, needing social workers, needing counseling, we'll have those on site as well to help our clients regain independence as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, one thing just to add to Janine's comments, if I can. Our Borden Avenue Shelter that she mentioned is also the only veterans' shelter in the city. And, and Janine and her staff do a marvelous job of finding those, those impressive veterans, permanent homes out of that shelter as well.
Yes, and we do a really good job in placements as well. Our, our shelters are, are working really hard at placing clients and we have really good data and stats regarding our placements for the past three years. And even over the past year that it was very difficult during COVID to, to place clients, but we, all of our shelters did a really good job.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the applicant wish to make a statement or provide some comments before I?
There's, there's one thing that I, I forgot to mention, which I think is really important and goes to what I said at the top of my remarks in regard to working to engage communities. We do work with each of our providers at the opening of the shelter to set up what are called community advisory boards, which we work with local stakeholders. It can be, you know, certainly members of the community board, but folks who are in the immediate area, business owners. It's a great way to build relationship with the, the provider to learn more about our neighbors, right? This is not just a one-way relationship. We, we want to be good neighbors. And the cab is one, one way that we go about doing that. We have cabs at each of our new Turning the Tide shelters and look forward to working with the board. Amanda from my team represents the agency at those meetings. And so we will certainly circle back to the board for recommendations of individuals who might be willing to serve on that community advisory board as well.
All right. Thank you very, very much. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to do now, Teresa, you can hear me. So what I'm going to do, you have the list of the board attendees. So I'm going to have the board, give the board the opportunity to ask questions. I'll be the last and then I'll pivot to our political representatives and the individuals who have signed up to speak tonight. So just if everybody could just be patient at the end of that discussion. If I see that the trend is in, in a certain direction and repetitive comments, we may just suspend with the discussion because they're all the same, the same thought. But I'll see how that goes as we go along. So with that said, before we get started, I just want to ask one. I'll go last, Teresa, if I have any other question. I just want to open up for the board purposes. Can you speak to what is the status of this project today, 7/27 on May 18? Erin?
Erin, yeah, do you want to?
Um, so I'm not sure I understand the question. I mean, we're moving forward with the project. I believe that the contract has been registered. And we, you know, will work with ICL in regard to, they'll be working on, you know, the build-out of the location and those sorts of things for the eventual opening. I'm just pulling up my notes, what we have as the target open date.
So would it say, is it in design phase? Is it in pre-planning phase?
I'll defer to ICL on that question.
Sure. I'm happy to, to step in. So we did submit the application for establishing the shelter that was accepted. Budget is under negotiation. We do have conversations with the developer. We are waiting for him to send us his draft design, which we had also promised at our last meeting that we would share with members of this community board for your input and guidance. And this community board meeting was really an important milestone in moving forward with the project.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Teresa, let's start with the board members. So board members, Teresa has the list of attendees. She'll call your name. If, if you have a question, try to limit it to two questions. If you don't have any questions, then just please so state. I just don't want to miss any of the board members before I pivot to the public and the political representatives. That's all. Teresa?
Abashkin. No?
He can't hear us. So, okay, next.
Balzano.
Antoinette?
Antoinette. No?
No question?
Left?
Roseanne?
Yes, I have a question. How, what is the time limit for someone to stay at the shelter before they get a voucher?
That's a, that's a great question. So it is varied. We do have a metric that we include in the mayor's management report on our length of stay, which is a little bit over 365 days, a little bit over a year for single adults. And now this, you know, at the individual level, it depends on the reasons that an individual is seeking our services. It also depends on external factors like the housing market. But individuals are able to be found eligible for a multitude of housing options that best serve their needs. So an individual might be found eligible for our city perhaps voucher. They might be also eligible for supportive housing. They might need some onsite social services to transition successfully to permanent housing. So there are a multitude of factors. Individuals might also choose to exit on their own through family reunification and, and other options as well. But the average length of stay for single adults is a little bit over a year. ICL might have data on, on their program in particular that they want to share, but that is our DHS citywide average.
Okay. And what do they have to do to qualify to be part of the program?
I didn't catch the last part.
What do they have to do to qualify to be part of your program?
So the right to shelter, there is not, for single adults, there is not qualifications. Individuals who need our services are able to receive those services irrespective of, you know, background, history, et cetera.
But I want to add specifically to this site, it is above, the women have to be above the age of 50. So Erin did talk about this. When women go to intake centers, there's two entries for them. We'll do an assessment of them. We'll give them conditional placement. We're taking in factors of what shelter might be best fit their needs. And that will be one of the criterias that they'll have to meet. They'll have to be above the age of 50 to be placed at this shelter.
Okay, 50 to what, what's the cutoff age?
I mean, 50 and above.
Yeah.
50 and above. And you're tested for alcoholism, drug abuse?
No, they're not. We believe that individuals who are seeking our service is a step to demonstrate connections to care, which is really important to getting, you know, assistance in matters that might be causing their homelessness. Sorry, I'll have to excuse me. My dog's making a little bit of noise in the background. And so, no, we, we don't test. The individuals do follow a good neighbor policy that we have. And then there are, you know, program rules that ICL implements in terms of the work that, and again, at the individual level that they're doing with their, their staff and social services staff. And I'll let them talk a little bit about that work. I think it's really important, the, the connections that are, are able to be made when somebody says yes, they want to come inside.
Okay, thank you.
Teresa?
Agnada? Uh, yes, can I be heard?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Has any traffic study been done on that corner? Because that is an extremely high area of motor vehicle accidents. There is also not a lot of outdoor space to house these women. You are directly next door to a group home. You are within walking distance to St. Joseph Hill, Housing K through high school, and two public schools within walking distance. When the nuns at St. Joseph Hill were terrorized by vandals, they were promised the world from the Geller House, that there would be all types of security and that these kids would never get out and bother them. That lasted for six months. And now we have problems again with them. So my fear is for the community. My fear is certainly for the group home next door who are helpless. And I don't see the point of having a home like this on such a busy traffic corner with no property for them to, to sit outside.
Thank you. So before each shelter opens, the agency does issue what is called a fair share, where we take into account a number of the factors that you're raising in regards to the space for the individuals to be able to congregate outside. I do hear the concern that you have. I know that ICL mentioned that they're going through the design phase with the developer, but they can speak about the indoor space that will be made available to these women.
There's not a lot of outdoor space for you. There's, there's not, there's a smidge of property there.
Under, understood, and that has been taken into consideration by the developer. He is committed to having outdoor space, not in the front.
I, I don't see, but what would you do? Use the parking lot? That's a very odd area to put something like that. And if they don't hang out within that area, what do they do? Roam the area where car accidents happen so frequently?
So I think, ICL, can you guys talk a little bit about, obviously, this, the outdoor space is something that you guys seem to be working through and speaking with the developer. But, you know, I, I don't think we've talked, it's really, the community to know what sort of programs and services and workshops and stuff that will be offered to the clients. This is not, you know, this is a temporary solution for these women, right? The goal is to connect them to housing during their, their stay at this shelter. That means making sure that they are attending appointments and stuff like that. So of course, we're going to, clients who are hanging, there will be downtime, of course. But again, the goal here, and ICL talks a lot about what they do here to help these clients, is to connect them to permanent housing. So when they come in, they will start to immediately work with them about doing that. So ICL, can you talk a little bit, aside from just connecting them to housing, there will be additional workshops and stuff. Obviously, that looks probably a little different right now because of COVID. I know at our other sites, you know, prior to COVID, we would do different sorts of workshops providers would offer. That obviously looks different now because of congregated settings. But certainly ICL will have stuff like that offered onsite for the women. So can you guys just talk a little bit about programs, workshops and sort of, maybe not specifically this site, but what you guys have done at other sites, just to give the community a little idea of what sort of happens on a day-to-day or whatever for the clients?
Pam or Janine, you want to talk sort of about, you know, what's a typical day in the life?
Yeah, a typical day in the life. So, um, all of our staff, you know, we, we definitely work really hard at creating an environment that is, that is friendly and where clients are able to utilize staff. And there's workshops, there's groups, there's, there's sitting areas for clients to watch television and to, to congregate inside. It was a little bit challenging. Well, it was challenging during COVID, having some of that community time inside. But we were able to work those things out and create spaces within the hotels that our shelters are in, in creating enough space for clients to congregate safely, watch television safely, have groups. Also have some, some telehealth groups also inside where clients were able to get services in those ways. We also do pretty thorough security assessments at every site that we have, ensuring that there's security on the floors throughout the shelters and also security that, that go outside of the shelter and walk up and down the blocks of the shelter and ensure that there's no loitering, that clients, if they're outside and they, they need assistance, that there's a way to help them. But we also want to ensure that, you know, our clients are, are, are women who are active in the community as well. They are able to go outside and go to stores and shop and be active members of the community. Our clients all sign good neighbor policies. And we really work hard at that with all of our clients, ensuring that they are good neighbors and that we are working with the communities and the community businesses, the retail stores and other parts of the community so that we are included in that community and, and becoming good neighbors. So there are lots of services that our clients can partake in, in the shelter and also outside in the community. We're going to be looking through Staten Island and seeing the best referral sources. We're going to be looking through Staten Island and seeing the best referral sources and, um, and different sites where our clients may be able to also get assistance, um, in Staten Island. But ICL does provide a lot of that assistance as well. And just to ensure that our, our clients are also community members. And, you know, we want to also be able to treat them and such.
Thank you, thank you very much. Board members, if, if, uh, everything that you've heard thus far, if your name is called, if your comment or concern was addressed, please try not to ask the same question again so we can get as broad a response as we can.
I don't, I don't think, uh, my comments were addressed at all regarding the traffic issues and regarding the group home next door.
And the open space, and the open.
Nor the security, because we've dealt with it with the Geller House. We were promised the world, and it lasted six months, so.
I'm, I'm happy to, to try again. So in the fair share that the agency issues before the shelter opens, it addresses some of the concerns that you mentioned in terms of what other, um, community, uh, services are in the area, schools, that sort of thing. Um, taking into account the concern around traffic, it can certainly make sure, um, that the teams go back. Um, we oftentimes are required to do an EAS. I'm not sure if that's the case here, but I'm happy to follow up on that. But the fair share does account for some of the concerns that you're raised in your initial concern.
All right.
What's an EAS? I'm sorry.
Environmental impact analysis, the statement of the environment.
Thank you.
Impact of that building.
Thank you, sorry, I should, I should have spelled it out.
That's okay.
In regard to your second question, um, of the group home, um, you know, ICL mentioned that there is security that, um, is both internal to the location as well as external to the location. Clients, um, do sign a good neighbor policy. If there are issues in which a client, um, is onsite and it's determined that they might be served by a better program, or a different program, I should say, um, we would be able to transfer that client, right? If our issue is they're not abiding by the good neighbor policy, or they have a higher level, um, of need than what's available at this particular location. But I know ICL to be an incredibly strong provider, um, doing great work across our system, both for single adult men, single adult women. Um, they mentioned some of the other shelters, uh, that they currently operate. Um, so that both addresses the security question and the group home question. Um, happy to answer any other questions.
We just, I just want to move on and give other board members a chance.
Teresa? Please.
Yamato?
Yeah, hi. It's very nice to see you people are doing out there for these, um, homeless women. Uh, I have two questions for you, though. One is your good neighbor policy, can the board receive a copy of that? And how many times does somebody, one of your clients, have to be in kind of jeopardy of that policy before they're removed?
So, uh, that's a good question. Um, one, the board, we can certainly share the good neighbor policy. Um, that's something that, uh, we're, we're happy to do. Um, you know, the goal is working with clients. Um, I, I certainly know that ICL is, is stronger in, uh, replying on how they do that. Um, but we recognize that we want to make sure that individuals remain engaged, remain connected. Um, we are the safety net to the safety net. Um, we want to make sure that individuals have a second chance, have a third chance, and we continue to work and engage with them. Um, but I'll let ICL speak about the specifics of, of how they do that through their on and off-site services and connections to care.
I also just wanted to mention that we, we work very closely with DHS and our program administrators regarding, um, the activities and our clients and the activities in the community. When we find that there are clients who do need a higher level of care or, um, or would be better served outside of the community, we will have a, a good working relationship with our program administrator who's on here, Dion Vega, um, in being able to have a discussion of where a client might be better served at. And we do work hard at transferring clients when there is a need to transfer them into a different place. So, um, we work really hard at ensuring that our clients are adhering by a good neighbor policy. And if we find that a client has some challenges or some difficulties, we work with DHS and we are very concerned about that. And we work with the client and DHS to find a place that's more suitable for them.
Thank you. Teresa?
Dr. Dolan?
Well, I'd like to echo what my esteemed colleague, Dr. Cognata, said. There's absolutely no outdoor space there. Traffic is terrible. Beyond that, I'd like to cede my time to Matt Maronis, Assemblyman Tenousis, and Grassmere Civic President Frank Minavaji. Thank you.
Okay, well noted, thank you. Teresa, who's next?
Freeman?
Yes, hi. Um, I, I don't know if this is an appropriate question to ask, um, but, and, and I ask this, um, totally acknowledging, I'm not disputing that there should be a homeless shelter cited in community board too or on Staten Island or anything like that. But I was wondering why this specific site was chosen as opposed to other sites? Are there, are there specific attributes about this site that make it desirable compared to other ones? Just to echo Dr. Cognata, I'm a graduate of St. Joseph Hill. I used to commute to St. Joseph Hill, and that does concern me, the particular, the proximity to St. Joseph Hill.
Erin?
Yeah, so, um, you know, I mentioned at the top, um, we've been working to locate shelter across the city and really focused in community boards. Um, what DHS does is we evaluate proposals, um, that our nonprofit service providers, um, submit, um, in which, you know, they have a property that's been selected, um, that they believe, you know, will meet the, the needs of the shelter program that they're intending, uh, to put forward. Um, you know, we worked very closely, um, in regards to, uh, you know, the, the typical review and analyzing that proposal. Um, and we believe that this site, uh, will be able to provide high-quality transitional services to the clients located there.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to remind everyone, um, if everyone, um, that signed up to speak, they will get a chance to speak at that appropriate time. I just want to make sure to the best of our ability. Teresa? Right?
Roy?
Yeah, no, no questions.
Okay, thank you.
Fred?
Just a quick one. Once the, uh, individuals are entitled to get their vouchers to get permanent housing, where might that permanent housing be?
That's a great question. Um, clients are free to look for housing wherever, you know, wherever they might want to, to be relocated. Um, you know, we recognize that they, I mean, it, it has to be within the five boroughs. Um, we do have one program, um, that would allow clients to move outside of the five boroughs. Um, but that voucher, uh, requires, you know, working with landlords, working in the, in the private rental market. Clients do also have access to, uh, NYCHA apartments. Um, and we work with them very closely with NYCHA. They also have access to the HPD homeless set-aside units, uh, and the affordable housing developments as well. So a couple of options.
Thank you.
Dr. Khalid?
Dr. Khalid is on mute.
No?
No, no questions, next. Oh, wait, wait, Dr. Khalid, did you have a question? Doc, Dr. Khalid?
I had to come off mute.
Next.
Lilian?
Yes. Uh, what's the timeline for the, uh, opening? Who's the developer and how big will the structure be? Can we see some of the floor plans, if they could be shared with the board?
Um, Erin, I can jump in here. Uh, so the, the developer has, as I mentioned, and, uh, a little bit earlier, the developer is completing the second draft of the building layout. I did not see it first. I was able, along with my colleagues, to provide some input. He had, uh, this developer has done other shelters in the city, so it is not a new type of building design for him. We talked a lot about ensuring that there's, um, enough open indoor space to make sure that the women can gather, um, and not be, um, stuck in small rooms. Uh, and so the building, I do not yet have what the, the last proposed design is, but as I mentioned, I'd be happy to, to go over that with, um, members of, of this community board.
Who is the developer, please?
The, the name is, uh, Rock Capital.
Rock Capital?
Yes.
And what is the timeline for, um, opening, shelter completion?
Uh, that is undetermined at the moment because there are several steps for us to go through. I think a, a, um, educated target would be late fall.
Of this year?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a tale there, Dr. Khalid?
Yes, Dr. Khalid, go ahead, please.
Okay. I have a question. Is this the first type of shelter for women on Staten Island?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And, and, uh, what are the, uh, where are the other shelters in other boroughs? How many are there and, uh, you know, just want to know how many shelters are there in other boroughs?
Sure, that's a great question. Um, we would be happy to send, um, what we call our Turning the Tide map, um, which breaks down the shelters by community board across the city of New York. Um, a couple, trying to think if, two years ago or a year ago, um, we announced a shelter on Victory Boulevard. Um, we also recently announced a shelter on Tompkins Avenue, um, as well as the ten fifty-five Highland Boulevard location, um, as new shelters under the mayor's Turning the Tide plan, um, on Staten Island.
Is, is this the, uh, existing building? It has to be renovated, or, and how many medical personnel will be there to watch these fifty women? Uh, you mentioned something, and, uh, one LPN, is that what, uh?
Yes, we have a LPN on our staff and a social worker on our staff.
So these are the two medical personnel will be able to handle fifty women if there's a need for anything else?
Um, well, go ahead, Janine, I'm sorry.
So, yes, we have these two, we have our, our LPN that provides, um, that can provide, uh, crisis care or emergency care, and our social worker that can also, um, assist. Um, but there's also larger issues that, that need to be handled by, um, hospitals. We can call EMS, and we have our, um, outside services that we also work with, ACT teams and, and other supportive services that we work with.
Did you say LPN? I'm sorry, LPN?
Yes, LPN.
Yes. What's that stand for?
Licensed Practical Nurse, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, but after, if I could just.
Yeah, we're probably going to say the same thing. Go ahead, Erin.
No, I don't think we were. I was going to say, I actually, I, I misspoke. This is the first woman's, uh, location in this community board. We do have one that we announced, uh, earlier in the year, um, in community board.
Great, okay.
You're right, I wasn't going to say that.
Thank you.
Teresa, next.
Lanza?
Yes, hi. Um, the one question that I have for any of the four of you, Janine, David, Pamela, or Erin, is, has any of you, uh? Am I there?
Yes, you're here, loud and clear.
I heard some interference. Have any of you personally come to this site, personally examined it, personally been through the neighborhood?
No question.
I have not. I have not.
Okay. I, I just wanted to know.
Thank you, thank you, Michael, good question. Teresa?
Mark Hasky.
Joe?
Joe?
I saw him.
The button as fast as I can.
All right, Joe. I don't want to miss you, Joe. Go ahead.
Just a few, a few quick ones. I want to make sure I understand. We're talking about, um, all women whose roots are on Staten Island, correct?
You're on mute, Erin?
You're on mute.
Speak up, I'm having a little bit of difficulty hearing you.
I know, it's my, I figure my PC, it, it's old as well.
Joe, I'll repeat the question. The question was, are the women the potential candidates that reside there from Staten Island?
Yes, part of, part of the goal of the Turning the Tide plan is to be able to place individuals who, uh, it's a borough-based plan, um, is to be able to place individuals close to their, uh, you know, anchors of life, whether that be, you know, family, friends, community, uh, religious institutions, jobs, et cetera. Um, so we do make the effort to, uh, priority place individuals who are from this community and from Staten Island, yes.
Okay. And the total number of women in the facility would be?
Fifty.
Fifty.
Fifty over fifty?
Fifty over fifty.
Right, yeah.
Okay. How many, how many, um, clients will be in each room?
Um, the.
I assume they're sleeping there, right? This is their.
Yes. The, the current design is to have two people per room. Um, waiting again for the, for the developer to, uh, show us how this space lays out to ensure that, as I, I mentioned earlier, that there's enough space for people to, um, have, uh, place together and socialize and, and not be stuck in, in small areas. And, and if I may, uh, if I may, go on with one other piece about the staffing, if that's okay? Because I think, as we were answering the question about what medical personnel are onsite, um, Dr. Costley did mention that there's a nurse and a social worker. However, that is not our total staffing pattern that, um, and if, if you would like, I'd be happy to share the entire staffing pattern, which is much more robust than those two people.
Okay, and I'm just trying to, to look at the configuration of the building. So at two per room, that's twenty-five rooms for people to live and sleep in, plus community rooms for watching television, you know, our group events, plus medical rooms for the medical staff. One of you has to go visit that building. It's, it's not, it's not that big. But that's, that's doing the developer to work out. Um, and the last thing, just, and that's concerning hours of access. Like a hotel where they can come in anytime and during non-programming hours, say they watch the, uh, the eleven o'clock news and there's, uh, a nice commercial for pizza. At eleven-thirty, can they just walk out the front door and go down the block to the local pizzeria? I mean.
No, there's, there's a curfew at all DHS shelters. Um, so there's a ten-hour curfew that needs to be abided by. Um, there are exceptions for individuals who are working. We do have clients in our shelter system who are employed and, and might need a dispensation to be able to have that curfew extended, uh, to be able to go to and from their, their job. Um, additionally, um, the shelter is open, though, twenty-four hours a day. So during the daytime hours, and this was an important policy change that was made under this administration, clients do not have to leave the shelter. They do have to leave the dorm for, you know, uh, housekeeping and those sorts of, uh, things. Uh, but they're onsite performing, uh, the shelter throughout the day, which is, again, an important policy change under this administration. Um, oftentimes is, is confused and people think that clients have to leave during the day. That's not the case.
Thank you. Teresa?
Minavaji?
Yes, um, I'd like to ask about the mental health needs of the occupants. Janine Costley, I believe you're the one who spoke about, um, trauma-informed and, uh, recovery-integrated. What percentage of your clientele require mental health services? And what does trauma-informed and recovery mean? Are, are these people all in recovery, or what does trauma-informed mean?
Certainly, we want individuals to recover from homelessness. We recognize that homelessness is the significant trauma here, as well as our clients may have had other traumas in their life that have led to homelessness. Losing all of your belongings and having to be in a homeless shelter is a trauma in itself. And so when we focus on trauma-informed care, we focus on the trauma of homelessness and the trauma of, of loss. And so our social workers and our mental health staff, um, only inside of the shelter but in our other programs, really focus on that. Um, there was another part of your question.
Recovery-integrated. Will, uh, the occupants be in recovery from drugs and/or alcohol?
Um, I, you know, we will see. There certainly may be some clients that may have some substance abuse issues. Um, and we deal with those, uh, issues with our clients as they, as they come. Um, you know, we're not painting a picture that our clients are, are perfect people. We are not perfect people, and we come with our own share of problems and issues, right? So our clients also with the, with the trauma of homelessness. Um, one of the first things that we do when clients come in is make an assessment of what a client needs. We do a thorough needs assessment. Maybe a client needs more mental health care. Maybe a client needs more substance abuse care. We have the resources within ICL, and we have the staff at ICL that are able to find the resources that clients need outside of the shelter as well, so.
Yeah, and so I guess from that. Yeah, and so I guess from that perspective, it's almost a hundred percent. I mean, in terms of speaking about trauma, so I get that, I appreciate it.
Thank Frank, you thank Frank, it's just of time, I have to move this forward.
Let me just, um, will this include children?
No.
No, it does not, it does not include children. But I do just also impress that, uh, the clients that are in the shelter are fifty and older. There's, um, a large part of the general population shelter in receiving a voucher that comes from being able to have a job and being a working person. So that's, um, another large part of our programming, ensuring that people have employment, finding, um, gainful employment for individuals so that they can work and they can go to work every day, get on the trains and buses, work and go to their places of employment, um, and be active members of the community and in the society, so.
One last question, if I may, I'm sorry.
Frank, I just.
I also just wanted to ask too about, um, the, the child aspect. I did see in the chat about boyfriends and, and husbands, there's no visitors allowed onsite. Um, the women can, you know, apply for a pass and leave for the weekend, but there are no visitors that are allowed in the facility, even if they are family. Um, we, they're very strict about that, so.
All right, thank you. So Teresa, going forward, board members, we, we've heard the full spectrum thus far. Um, we want to restrict it to one question because we do have a lot of people behind us here. Go ahead, Teresa, next, thanks, Frank.
Pacifica.
Uh, just a question regarding, are conversations held with the local elected officials before a location is secured?
So at the time that we have, um, uh, rated and, uh, excuse me, a rated RFP, uh, which is a request for proposal response from a provider, uh, we make calls to our local elected officials as well as the community board and we follow up with a written notification. Uh, that occurred earlier this year, um, in May, uh, excuse me, in March, um, ICL as well as DHS and Department of Social Services had a meeting, uh, with our local elected officials, uh, the borough president, uh, to discuss the details of this program.
Thank you very much.
Teresa.
Dr. Raju.
I have no questions, uh, chairman.
Thank you.
Regario? You're on mute, Jerry.
No question at this time.
Thank you, next.
Pantoro?
No questions, thank you.
Semenera?
Yes, hello, I'm here. Um, a question, um, I'm a geriatrician, so, um, my experience is that, um, older women, um, who are homeless have higher rates certainly of mental illness. And also, as they get older, um, complications of dementia. Um, are there any specific plans to support women who may be coming to this shelter with problems of, uh, um, impairments of their cognition? Um, these are generally not things that can be, um, improved, um, no matter how we try with medic, with, uh, with medications and cognitive impairment in a person who's dealing with the stress of homelessness. On top of it, um, I think just really, um, suggests that, uh, this would be, these would be particularly difficult cases from a social service perspective to manage. Um, how many women over the age of fifty currently are being sheltered off Staten Island? And if Staten Island doesn't have enough to fill this shelter, is it anticipated that we have that particular population need here on Staten Island? Um, and if not, then we would be correct in assuming that people from other boroughs would be coming to this shelter? Yes?
If you have a question, uh, we are DHS, uh, our oversight agency is state OTBA. Um, within state regulations, um, there are requirements in respect to, um, individuals being what's called medically appropriate for shelter. Um, individuals need to be able to meet, um, their ADLs. Um, and, you know, because the, uh, facilities within our single adult system are congregate in their nature, um, it makes it very different, difficult, um, for, you know, if there is onsite sort of like home health attendance, uh, needed. So if clients have a higher level of care as a result of that, it wouldn't be medically appropriate for shelter and we would work, uh, with our colleagues, um, to find them a more suitable place, uh, than shelter. Um, in regards to, um, those individuals who do meet the requirements, uh, in that regard and the onsite, uh, social services, I'll let ICL speak to that.
Actually, I really appreciate the question and hopefully as we move forward, um, we would probably love to connect with you to talk more about, um, how we, we can really work together. So, so I really appreciate that. Um, the, the shelter itself is for women designated as general population. So, so based on what Erin was saying, the women that should be coming to this shelter are those that need, um, a place to really get stable, find employment and return to permanent housing in the community. Hopefully we, we, we unify with some of their family members. I agree with Erin, if, let's say that there is a woman who, um, is deemed medically appropriate for the, for the site, but in our care with her, we uncover that there are other, um, cognitive or other issues that are beyond our care, then that is, that is a place where because ICL has a really robust system dealing with severe mental illness all the way through, um, the whole continuum of care, that we would lean on our own internal system to find additional resources and help that woman get to a different level of care. So I don't think it would be, uh, in anyone's best interest that we would try and, um, manage someone who, uh, really is not appropriate for shelter moving to permanent housing.
Thank you.
And I just want to answer the last piece of your question about, um, the borough base or what, well, if all these women will be from Staten Island. So as Erin mentioned, this is a borough-based plan. Um, the goal of this is to house individuals closest to their, their social networks, their families, their, um, their healthcare providers, so on and so forth, right? We will give, um, priority to women who come from community board two in Staten, on Staten Island. Um, and then we will open it to the surrounding community boards, um, and then, yes, citywide. And there is a criteria, as we mentioned, right? As, as Pam said and Erin has said, it is general population, but there is that criteria of being above the age of fifty. So, um, it's not just another, right? It's not just another, a regular shelter where you can be any age, we do, there is that criteria. So I do want to be clear about that, right? We will, we will give priority to Staten Islanders, uh, women coming from Staten Island that are appropriate and that make that above the age of fifty that don't have severe mental illness or substance abuse, um, and that are appropriate for this site. And then again, we will open it to the surrounding, uh, community boards and, and citywide, yeah.
Thank you. Teresa.
Federico?
Yes, a quick question about the numbers. I guess Erin, you had a lot of facts about the people of the system. Do you know how many people from community board two? And we could break it down to men and women are currently in the shelter system since the need is site, the site is needed for people from our area supposedly. And, uh, do you have that number?
Yeah, uh, I do, we have about, um, of, of, I'm just trying to play up, excuse me. Um, we have about seventy-five individuals who are from this community board, they're across the city and, and other suburbs.
Right, that's men and women?
Ah, yeah.
Okay, and I still, I'm confused about the size of the building. Is it going to be torn down? Uh, is the footprint going to be bigger? Is it going to be taller? Because I've gone by the site, it's not that big of a building.
Not very big, no.
For fifty, uh, people, uh, especially with common areas and cooking areas and all sorts of things like that. So is the footprint going to be bigger and is the height going to be bigger?
Um, it's a really good question. Again, I'm waiting for the developer's design, but to be fair, I have not heard that they are increasing the footprint.
All right, well, to be fair to us, that would be important to know.
Yes, understood.
Get an answer to that.
Understood.
Thank you, thank you, Steve. Teresa.
The Boyansky?
Yeah, just one question really, uh, and it's a statement more or less. But if you're saying that most, most of the people, that these women are going to be coming from Staten Island, and if you don't make that criteria, you're going to take them from other boroughs. Why do they have to go to Brooklyn to go through your center to get into this? Why isn't there a center in Staten Island? If all of these people are from Staten Island, why would you make them to go to Brooklyn?
That's a great question. So, uh, DHS has a single point of intake, except in the case of women, we do have two points of intake. Um, our points of intake, uh, are by, are by system. So we have a family intake up in the Bronx. We have the women's intake in Brooklyn and Bronx. And then we have our men's intake and adult family intake in Manhattan. Part of that centralized intake is really about managing a system that on any given night houses, um, approximately forty-nine thousand individuals, which is, is today's census. Um, we need to have a coordinated intake point so that way we are able to then place individuals in what we know to be vacancies for that initial placement where we continue to learn more about the client and have them then placed in the program shelter that's most appropriate, um, for what will be a longer-term placement as they continue their transition back to independent living. Um, so I do hear the point. Um, part of it is just the operationalizing of an emergency shelter system where we need to make sure that we are utilizing what is a scarce resource, which is shelter, to make sure that we are filling the beds with individuals who need them, um, as well as having a healthy vacancy so we can move people as needed as well.
Okay, just one other statement, uh, I just want to know you and your other people on this committee here, are you aware that we have no city hospitals Staten Island?
I am aware of that. Department of Social Services doesn't oversee the citywide hospital system, but I'm happy to relay that back to my colleagues at City Hall.
Okay, beef course of future, as you're saying, you're going to have a nurse there, okay? I can understand that, that's, but really for hospital's sake of ambulance going up and down Highland Boulevard and having fifty people up there that we don't know that they're all Staten Islanders at this particular time, you're adding into, into a hospital that's going to be Staten Island University Hospital? It's not even a city hospital. Isn't that, I, I, that's baffling me, I am baffled. I don't even, this hospital can't handle what it has.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Robert.
No problem, Steve.
AJ has appeared, does AJ have a question? No, and what about McNamara?
No.
Okay, that's.
That completes it.
I had his hand up, Bob, I don't know if he has a question.
I tell you, I, I think I, I've heard the full spectrum. I mean, the only question that I had before I pivot to the elected officials or their representatives, are the people that take care of the, are the caretakers or the LPNs or the staff, are they, do they have background checks on these people that will work there, taking care of the residents?
Yes, our HR department does a full, um, background check on all of our employees at ICL.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that.
There's two questions in the chat that I just wanted to answer. I did misspeak on the, the contract registration and I, I do apologize for that. Um, as was mentioned, I believe it was by Pamela, we are continuing the budget negotiations, um, for, uh, the contract. Um, and the other point that I wanted to mention, um, about the community involvement and the concern around, uh, you know, whether or not the community has been involved. Each year, we do send a letter to the community board as well as our local elected officials, recognizing that you all know your community is quite well, uh, requesting sites for possible shelter. Um, unfortunately, uh, CB three and the elected officials from this area have not responded, uh, to, uh, provide sites for that. Um, we do, if folks, you know, have sites that they would like us to look at for additional sites in the community board, we would be happy to take those under consideration. Um, our process works in a way that our nonprofit service providers, as I mentioned, they submit a response to your request for proposal and then that proposal is rated and reviewed based on the merits of the proposal as well as the needs of the, the agency and the system.
All right, thank you very much. So the only, one of the takeaways on, that I, that I've heard here is that the project is in it. As far as design, development, construction and layout and program, it's in its infancy. None of these documents, building elevation, the size, the open space, the amenities on the perimeter, on the outside, in that tight location, they really haven't been developed yet, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so that concludes the, um, the board questions. Each of the board members that are in attendance tonight had the opportunity to ask questions and you responded to all of them. So now, I'm, and I, I was the last one, as I said, so I'm going to turn it over to the elected officials or their representatives that have signed up. And next up at the plate here is Mr. Carr, Chief of Staff, the Council Member, Mattio. Are you still with us, Mr. Carr?
I am, thank you.
Okay, great, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, my name is David Carr, as was stated, I'm Chief of Staff to City Council Member Stephen Mattio, who represents the area, uh, where the shelter is being proposed and I give this testimony on his behalf. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Staten Island Community Board Two. I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the homeless shelter proposed for the fiftieth district at ten fifty-five Highland Boulevard. As part of this administration's catalog of truly bad ideas for Staten Island, this has to rank among the worst. I believe the site selection of this type of facility should include thoughtful, thoughtful consideration of the population the facility will serve as well as the community and borough that will support it. To cite this facility in the midst of a quiet neighborhood of detached one-family homes in Grasmere with no nearby commercial service establishments, other public amenities or open spaces is questionable at best. The existing building and location is a poor choice to support the proposed use and density being considered. There is a reason why the original building bulk is not permitted at this location. The size and scale of the structure is incompatible with the surrounding community. That incompatibility includes a lot in building size, height and coverage, impervious services, surfaces and lack of open space, not to mention the borough's worst enemies, density and congestion. Staten Islanders are a generous people. We have always supported the homeless who live in our communities, but we cannot cite a shelter in an area where we're both out of context with the community and frankly, maybe even violate the local zoning resolution. Years ago, this medical office was built pursuant to a special permit issued by the Board of Standards and Appeals to allow for its current six thousand square foot size, which was well in excess of the maximum permitted by the zoning at that time. The permit was for use as a medical office with restrictions, not dormitory-style housing or non-conforming occupancy as commercial office spaces, often became the case at this site over the years illegally. Since then, and for many good reasons, zoning has changed. Doctors stopped using their, their, their own homes to operate their practices. Medical billing and removal of many procedures to outpatient settings exploded the impacts a medical office has on a residential neighborhood. The proliferation of the car and the expansion of mass transit made traveling farther to visit a doctor a more reasonable proposition. As a result, there were zoning resolutions, they would not even permit a medical office on a residentially zoned lot like we have here. What's more, zoning provides bonuses for medical facilities to incentivize construction in commercially zoned areas. These changes were made to protect the fabric of the existing residential communities and the quality of life of all residents. Let's be clear about what this use actually is. This surely seems to fit the definition of a transient hotel to me, which cannot be built as a right in an R-two zone. City agencies will tell you that this is not a transient hotel because they will twist and contort zoning interpretations wherever possible, but this is a questionable, if not illegal, use, period. Additionally, the whole bottom floor of the existing building is listed as a cellar, which by law cannot be used for habitable space. Let me repeat that. The lower half of the building cannot be used for habitable space. That's living rooms and bedrooms. And if they hope to convert the cellar to a basement to increase the habitable space allowed, they may not have adequate parking to support that change. In reality, they don't have adequate parking to support the existing use now. And that doesn't include spaces that may be lost to meet current maneuverability and screening standards. How can they hope to serve fifty people and residents, fifty residents plus staff with those constraints? On top of that, there are still unanswered questions. The BSA issued approvals related to drywells because there was no city sewer at the time this building was authorized and yet there's no record of illegally approved connection to the city sewer. Did someone connect without approvals? Are the drywells still being relied upon? Are they even still there? The proposal says there will be an outdoor recreation area in a backyard for residents. What backyard? You have a parking lot and a side alley leading to an entrance to another floor of the structure. Where is this recreation supposed to happen? How are sanitation services going to be maintained? As best we can tell, garbage is going to be piled up on the street like you see in front of multifamily dwellings across the city, attracting pests, clogging critical sidewalks and bus stops on busy streets and other negative impacts on our quality of life. Staten Islanders and I know what the city's promises are worth. They cannot honestly commit to us that it will always be a women's shelter or for people of a certain age or any other demographic. They will not even be exclusively for Staten Island's homeless. This shelter, like all the others, would have to conform to the city's capacity needs. And no matter how it shakes out, this will amount to a gut punch to Grasmere residents in the places where it hurts the most, the equity of their homes and their quality of life. These are just some of the reasons why there is no welcome mat being rolled out for this proposal. There's no worse neighbor in the five boroughs in the city of New York and there's no worse landlord in this five boroughs in the city of New York. They are setting up the residence of the neighborhood and the shelter alike for a substandard coexistence and it cannot be allowed. In lieu of real due diligence, transparency and borough outreach, we are presented with a letter and the address of the new facility. That is the extent of the city's site selection process and consultation for this location. Staten Islanders care about those who are in need. And if the city has any care for the residents of Grasmere and those they are purporting to help, city officials will table this proposal and work with our local elected officials and community stakeholders. city officials will table this proposal and work with our local elected officials and community stakeholders to find a suitable and supportive location as an alternative to the shelter, not in addition to the shelter. But I can tell you now that it's not here in Grasmere. I ask again, city pause proceeding with this sighting at this location and recommend that the community board reject this proposal out of hand. Thank you.
You're muted, Robert.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Thank you for your statement. We will now hear from Councilmember Joseph Barelli's representative or Joseph Barelli, if he is here. Anyone?
Hold on.
Okay.
Hello, I'm here for Joseph Barelli.
Okay, great. Where are you?
Hi.
Michelle. Go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have a statement to read from Councilmember Barelli. Here it goes. We know that Mayor de Blasio has long favored a top-down approach to governing the countless neighborhoods that make up New York City. But what is hard to imagine is that the top-down approach has taken a misguided direction where the needs of the community and desires of his constituents to live with few interruptions to their lives are placed at the back burner while social justice and other progressive goals are all that, that's being considered. I am not opposed to homeless shelters. We need homeless shelters. We want to care for people who are homeless because of financial problems, drug addiction, mental health issues or whatever. But we cannot sit back and pretend that this location will help our community in any way. This is a neighborhood where people live, where they play, where they go to school. And I will continue to urge the de Blasio administration to look at alternative sites in more suitable places. Hopefully, he tries working with us for a change, though I suspect after eight years I will be let down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Right, thank you. We will now hear from Assemblymember Michael Tenousis. You have, if you're here, you have extra time because Dr. Dolan yielded some time to you.
Thank you very much. My name is Michael Tenousis. I'm the Assemblymember for this, for this location, the east shore of Staten Island and half of Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. And, you know, I have to tell you that I'm a little bit disheartened today because if I, if I understand correctly from Mr. Lanza's question, none of the people that are talking to us today visited this location. And, you know, we met way back when with the borough president and the Congresswoman and we told you our concerns. I specifically told you our concerns. And you, you're saying today that you have not visited this location as of yet to be able to come to us and have an actual informed conversation. So I'm a little bit disheartened by that. Another thing that I wanted to ask you, I just want to confirm. You have not, you did not consult with any elected officials, whether they're council, assembly members, borough president or anyone here before this location was chosen. Is that correct? Can you hear me?
But on this site specifically, no, we did not.
Okay. And from my understanding of this location, it, besides the fifty residents that are at this location, there will be about thirty staff members at any given time, correct?
You hear the answers.
The name?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
There will be about thirty.
So there'll be eighty people potentially at this location. Since twenty eighteen, there have been forty-five motor vehicle accidents at the intersection of Grasmere and Highland Boulevard. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but that's a, that's a statistics confirmed by DOT and the New York City Police Department. So you're talking about basically one of the busiest intersections on Staten Island. Now, before I read a letter that myself and former Assemblymember Maronis submitted in a, in a editorial to the Staten Island Advance, I just want to say this. I know that somebody mentioned before that no visitors would be allowed. I'll tell you, I was a prosecutor for eight years and the last trial that I prosecuted was a case where a woman that lived in a shelter here on Staten Island with her babies got a visit from her boyfriend and she let him in, passed the security. Things got out of control and he murdered her and her babies. Okay, so I can't stress enough, when you say no visitors are allowed, it's really going to come down to what type of security you have at this facility. And you can't have the adequate security because there's just not enough space. You know, do you guys know how many parking spots are at this location currently?
I don't know how many parking spots are there.
Okay, there are thirteen parking spots at this location. Okay, currently. So a plan that would have outside recreation and parking at this location for the staff members, thirty of which could be there at any given time in addition to the fifty residents is completely unrealistic. So with that being said, I just want to read the letter that myself and Assemblyman Maronis submitted. "It is extremely frustrating when City Hall makes unilateral decisions which affect our daily lives without input from local elected officials of the community. Being a part of New York City has left us with battle after battle, year after year, for safe streets, reasonable taxes and basic resources. For this reason, it was no surprise when the Department of Homeless Services notified myself and the other elected officials one random Tuesday afternoon and informed us that they'd be building a homeless shelter in Grasmere. The purpose of the city's phone call was not to seek our advice on the matter or to even announce that a public hearing or meeting would be held to discuss the issue. The phone call was simply a short courtesy call where questions could not be answered. Process aside, this is the worst possible location for a homeless shelter. This location is a former doctor's hospital with insufficient amount of parking spaces and a building structure not conducive to housing residents. The idea that the Department of Homeless Services plans to house fifty residents with approximately thirty staff members working at a given time is ridiculous. Moreover, the zoning for this location is not appropriate for such a facility. To add insult to injury, the intersection of Highland Boulevard and Steuben Street is one of the busiest intersections in our borough. Since twenty eighteen, there have been forty-five motor vehicle collisions at this intersection. With the location already dangerous, adding fifty residents and thirty staff members is a recipe for disaster. We have expressed our concerns to the DHS multiple times, especially with regard to the improper zoning. We are awaiting a response and we are hopeful that they will come to their senses and realize that a homeless shelter at this location is a terrible idea." Respectfully submitted, Michael Tenousis, Assemblymember, Matthew Maronis, former Assemblymember. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Just want to note that the Assemblymember said that there were thirty staff, but the total staff are approximately thirty. That doesn't mean that there's going to be thirty people at one time in the shelter. It's a twenty-four hour building and so there's different shifts. So that is not, that is not the, the plan.
Well, how many, then, in that case, how many will there be at a given time? Because that was the, I was under the impression it'll be thirty plus the fifty residents.
Well, there's a staffing pattern of approximately thirty, but thirty people aren't all on at the same time. On the, the second shift between four to twelve, there's a, a certain amount of staff, not thirty people. Overnight, there's not thirty staff members. During the day, there's a little bit more staff members, but it's not thirty people altogether, all the time, twenty-four hours on site.
Okay, but do you have an idea how many at any given time?
It's different for different shifts.
Okay, I, I understand. I, I respect your response. Listen, this, this is the idea. This is not the right location. This is a recipe for disaster. It's only a matter of time till something happens, okay? Somebody's going to get hurt, whether it's at the intersection. I, I was a prosecutor for eight years. I have seen various things happen at homeless shelters, especially surrounding areas of homeless shelters. This is a dangerous location for a homeless shelter. This is not the proper location. If you'd like to find another location, I'd be more than happy to help you. But as I told you guys in the last meeting, this is the worst possible location and it is asking for trouble. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Assemblymember. Okay, we have one more elected official, former Assemblymember Matthew Maronis, if you're still here with us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. A lot of clear.
I appreciate the opportunity. As you clearly stated, I'm a former Assemblyman of the, currently the sixty-fourth Assembly District, but I speak on behalf of the residents of Grasmere, one of, of which I am. I pass by this site on a daily basis. It is totally inadequate. And before I get to the specifics of the inadequacy of the structure, I would like to question Mayor de Blasio's representative, Ms. Drinkwater, who has stated she was work, she wants to work with local stake, stakeholders. She has not visited the site. She did not communicate with local elected officials. And I think that is so disingenuous and an insult to this community of hard-working families, families who have sacrificed for generations to buy a home in a single-family detached setting where the zoning does not allow such a warehousing facility, and I will use the word warehousing. It was stated before that it's of inadequate size. I am very familiar with that structure because I've been in it multiple times and my research tells me that it is four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet and that includes the lower level that now is legally used for residential, as alluded to by Mr. Carr. Now, if you divide fifty individuals into the four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet, that allocates eighty-five square feet of space per individual. Now, I think a prison cell may be larger than that, if I'm not mistaken. I'll go on to the outdoor, the activity, subtract activity space, community space, cooking space, staff space, security space, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That eighty-five square feet gets whittled down even further per individual. So we're actually, you mentioned that we're going to move these individuals, Ms. Drinkwater, into more suitable living conditions. In my opinion, we're putting them in worse than a prison cell. And as Dr. Deborah mentioned very, very eloquently prior and very adamantly, there is no outdoor space on this site. And we are absolutely dismayed and insulted by the fact that none of you have been on this site. In fact, you have, your opening comments, Mr. ICL and Ms. Woodlock and Ms. Vega and Ms. Mattel, I believe is boilerplate bureaucratic information. If none of you have been on the site, any rational person who would go there and see that you have thirteen parking spaces and no other outdoor space, no other footprint for anyone to congregate. So we're going to relegate these fifty individuals with mental health disorders, drug addiction into a prison cell less than eighty-five square feet. A wrong facility, a wrong location and it goes in tandem with what was mentioned by Assemblyman Tenousis that it just goes lockstep with what this administration, Mayor de Blasio's administration has done to the city and to this borough. The residents of Grasmere are adamantly opposed to this facility being cited here. Inappropriate venue, inappropriate location.
All right, thank you. Thank you, former Assemblyman. Thank you for your comments. Okay, all right, so that completes the elected officials that signed up. Now I'm going to go through the, the chat group because I do have it. I'm scanning all of them as I go through them. I do want to allow, Mark, if you can allow Jennifer San Martino to speak on behalf of Borough President Otto. Are you able to do that?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, two minutes, Jen.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. What I'm sharing with you is a letter that was sent on the day that the shelter was announced, which was March twentieth of this year. To date, we have received no response to this letter. The Borough President and several other electeds, many of whom are on this call, signed this letter and this was addressed to Stephen Banks, Commissioner of the Department of Homeless Services. "We are writing so that we may better understand the process used by the Department of Homeless Services to identify Staten Island sites that meet the established requirements for homeless shelters pursuant to the mayor's borough-based plan. While we understand the tenants of the turning of the tide on homelessness, there seems to be a lack of transparency and outreach to borough representatives and community stakeholders that we find disconcerting. As elected officials representing our constituencies at the federal, state and city levels, we are obligated to inquire about the due diligence associated with this process. Since site selection is one of the paramount steps in the entire process, it should include thoughtful consideration of the population of the facility will serve as well as community and the borough that will support it. Seen in that light, we believe that many factors must be considered when identifying appropriately placed facilities within the fabric of Staten Island's unique neighborhoods. Of specific concern is the Highland Boulevard location in Community District Two. We assume the project must comply with all laws, rules, regulations and codes mandated by city, state and federal authorities having jurisdiction. That said, we understand that these facilities are defined as transient hotels and their locations are restricted by zoning. We want to know how this use will be permitted in a single-family residence district and how a facility with such incompatible density and building massing is considered acceptable as part of a neighborhood zoned only for detached one-family homes. We also understand that the former use, which is also not currently permitted in an R2 residence district, was approved by the Board of Standards and Appeals. To that end, we must ask if the new incompatible use will be referred to the BSA for review. These questions represent only a few of our concerns. We want to know what regulations and criteria are being followed to locate and ultimately realize a complying project. We require a definitive explanation of the procedures being used to identify all new borough shelter locations. Additionally, we would like to know what alternative borough sites were examined and considered unacceptable and why. The mayor described maintaining robust engagement throughout the process that would be responsive to community input. We have not seen any, any community engagement to date. We are, however, still hopeful that the administration and your agency will be responsive to our concerns and to those of the community being asked to accept and support this effort. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Thank you. All right, so everyone, just bear with me a moment because I'm scanning the chat box. And while I'm doing that.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a very brief, I'm sorry to interrupt, Matthew Maronis. May I ask a very brief question?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask the mayor's representative, because we hear going, dancing in a circle here. Is this project a fait accompli or are we just being accommodated this evening to express our opposition? Is this a fait accompli, this project? Can she answer that question, yes or no?
I just want to clarify my position. I work for the Department of Social Services. Yes, we're moving forward with this project.
Thank you for allowing us to participate in the, in the stakeholders' decision, as you mentioned prior. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Letitia Ramoro, I don't know if you're here, you signed up. All right, Richard Lobasso.
No, no, go ahead, Letitia. She's here.
Oh, she's here. Letitia, you got two minutes, please, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I'll be brief and I'll be quick. I just want to urge everyone to vote against this project and this site because homeless shelters don't belong anywhere on Staten Island. Just quite frankly, turning the tides is just a last-minute scramble by the de Blasio administration to cover up for the fact that they have had a failed housing policy all these years. I want to ask, eighty-nine shelters have been built. Have we reduced homelessness in New York City? What is the cost per night, per individual for this shelter in this spot? And, and shelters throughout New York City? And lastly, when will we get the documents that we requested through FOIA, through Alexia Dodd? I am working with a large group of, of Grasmere homeowners and Staten Islanders in general who want information and I urge this board not to vote no and to make their voices heard on this project because there is no transparency in this. The twenty eighteen RFP under an emergency guise should never have been funded by the City Council because I don't believe that it has reduced homelessness one bit. But Ms. Drinkwater, you can answer that question. How much has homelessness gone down since these eighty-nine shelters have opened?
I'm happy to answer the question. I'm not sure what you're referring to in terms of the two thousand eighteen RFP, but let me provide you some information on the Department of Homeless Services and our, our. We have been able to hold the shelter census flat year over year in two thousand seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. We've actually seen a pretty substantial decrease in our families with children homeless census. The Families with Children Census is currently at two thousand twelve levels. So we've, we've done a remarkable job in terms of addressing our families with children homeless census. We do continue to see increases in our single adult census, particularly our single adult male census and we are working to address that through the same tools that we've been working to drive home and the successes on our families with children side. that we've been working to drive home and the successes on our Families with Children side. That's the prevention first approach. It's providing rental assistance. I mean, I just want to clarify, of the 89 shelters that have been announced, 46 open. Some of these shelters are purpose-built, they're ground-up development. And so the time from announcement to open takes some time for that development to take place.
Thank you. Thank you, Letitia. All right. Richard Lobasso, a resident, submitted a question in writing. I don't know if he's here, but it will be in the public records.
Richard is here as well.
Okay, Ms. Lobasso, you have two and a half minutes, please.
Richard, go ahead.
Hello, I'm sorry, Rob, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Yes, you have two and a half minutes, sir.
One question that my neighbors and I are really concerned with is actual site security. What the staffing level is just for security, is it going to be 24/7? How many people will be working security? And are they going to be assigned to that facility specifically?
Good question.
A security assessment is done before the shelter opens. And so we do a thorough assessment of where the guards will be posted, on the different floors, how many will be doing tours outside. And we have a contracted security, security staffing that we utilize. And so we'll be working with our, our contracted security to make that assessment.
Thank you. Lorenzo De Luca of Cameron Park Homeowners, are you here?
Lorenzo. Here.
Okay, you have two and a half minutes, sir.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes. My comments are the same as some of the ones made previously, and they're more concerned with the building and its relative size, of which we do not have any kind of information. But just for, for your purposes, I used to live at 1027 Highland Boulevard, which is two doors away, and right next door to the group home. The group home is 5,000 square feet, and there are nine residents. I, I think those are the mental health rules that, that permit only that number of people. So it's rather remarkable to think that a building of a similar, of a smaller size could house 50 people with much larger staff. And just as a concern, from living next door to that facility, even though the staffing was much smaller, the number of people, the staff, the issues really were with the staff and with parks because there's never enough for all of that. People were always parking in our driveway, driving over our lawn, doing all of those kinds of things, which are going to happen again if there are many more people in that area.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir. Susan Turner, are you here?
I don't see Susan.
Okay, well, she did submit something in the record, so it'll be put in the public record. Mr. Yusef.
Go ahead, Mr. Yusef.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm currently a resident of Steubin in the Highland. I literally opened my window and I could see the location. I've lived here for almost 20 years. I park my car in front of that location all the time. We have multiple residents right in front of that location. Those car accidents that they state are true. I see them happen all the time. Cars are going down at high rates of speeds. I have to watch out when I'm crossing the street. So having people across the street with mental health issues and their own issues, that area is not safe. 13 parking spots? Honestly, I don't even think it's 13 parking spots. It's probably less. The back, the backyard of that building is people's homes. That little alleyway that we speak of is people's homes. My front yard, I look out the front window, is that location. There's kids that come from that, the schools down the block and hill, come and they wait for that bus right in front of that location. There's people that go to work in front of that location, they wait for the bus, the express bus on the side. That area is way too busy for that location. I have my elderly parents that also live in that location. We all know that this location will not be only for what they're saying it is, 50 women. It changes over time. All this stuff changes over time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We're down to a handful more. So let me just get this right. Mr. Dementum, Ms. Maggini, and Alexia Dodd, they, while they did sign up, they didn't submit any questions or comments. So we're going to just recognize that they did sign up but didn't submit anything. So I'm going to go back to the chat box now to see if.
Yes, sorry, Robert. Mr. Dementum is there.
Is he here? Okay, is he here? All right, if he's here, does he want to speak? Because he didn't submit anything.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Dementum. You have two and a half minutes, please.
Thank you. Well, I want to say that I agree with the, the rest of the community members that this location is definitely not the right fit. This is, there's definitely going to be some injuries there. Somebody's going to get hurt. There's no doubt about it. And, and it's, the city officials should take this seriously. Their, this location is not big enough. The, the intersection is too busy. And it's, it's just going to result in somebody, one of these homeless people is going to get hurt. And, and they should, you know, they, they will be responsible for it. You guys should understand that this is going to be on you. When somebody gets, there's two bus stations right on that corner. There's two bus stations right on that corner, one on each side of this facility. You don't have equitable parking, and you don't have any outdoor space. So people that are, there's 50 people, they're going to come out on a day like today, and they're going to start walking around. People with mental disabilities are going to start walking around. Somebody's going to get hurt. And you guys are trying to squeeze this in for whatever reason. And that brings up another question. How much money does it cost the city? How much is this contract will cost the city on an annual basis? Can you please tell us this information?
At the moment, we're still negotiating the contract with ICL. The per diem rate for shelter is $160 a night.
So it's $160 for every resident that will spend a night there?
Wow.
Okay.
So, so $8,000 a day or 200 and a quarter million dollars a day will be spent by the city for housing 50 people in that, in that location. Now, if that building wasn't there and anybody wanted to put a house there, they wouldn't even be allowed to put a two-family house. The most they'd be able to put up is one house for one family. And yet you're trying to put 50 people in there? 50? That's like 50 families and, and staff. 50 people that are going to be coming and going, 50 people that are not familiar with the area that are going to be coming and going. So anybody that wants to put a house could do a one-family house, not even a two-family. That would not be allowed in this area. And you're trying to put 50 people in here? Just because you're going to make a quarter million dollars on this, this, ICL is going to make a quarter million dollars a month of taxpayers' money. So they don't care what they're going to do and how many people that live in this neighborhood are going to have to move and sell their houses because they're not going to see somebody getting hurt on that corner.
All right. Thank you very much. So your time is up. Thank you. Janine Mangini.
Yes, hello.
Hello, two and a half minutes. Welcome.
Okay. Hi, how are you? Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I, I live also, actually, I live right next door to Mr. Moronis. And I do have children that attend St. Joseph Hill Academy. And I, I'm very concerned about this. Will there be sex offenders at this shelter? Do you know?
It just places all of our clients in accordance with the law. If there is an individual who has a residency restriction, they would not be able to be placed at this location.
Okay. And regarding the visitors, you say that they're, they wouldn't be allowed to have visitors?
That's correct.
They, they would, I, I can't imagine 50 residents would not have one visitor. And of course, we, you know, I echo everything everyone else was saying about the, the, the location, the inappropriate location and so forth. But they will congregate outside in that shelter or go down the block where we live. And, you know, I, I've been around there. I've seen, you know, I've seen needles on floors, you know, right, right around very residential homes and so forth. How, how would you guarantee that that would not happen? That my daughter or my son would not be, you know, walking around and, and see these people congregate, being exposed to this type of, of behavior?
All right. Thank you very much. I hate to cut you off, but your time is up. We got the message. Thank you.
Robert, Frank Nenavaji is next.
One second, I have Alexia Dodd.
No, she's last. First goes Frank.
Frank was a board member. He spoke.
Yeah, he wants to speak as a Grassmier civic president. If that's okay.
Frank.
Is that appropriate, Robert, or I could seek my time if you want?
Well, you did have your opportunity as a board member. So unless you're going to bring something new to the table that we haven't already heard, I'd request your indulgence.
You got it. Move on.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Alexia.
Uh, yes, I have some questions. My name is Alexia Dodd. I have some questions about the procurement process. What method of procurement was used here? Okay, so it's under the standard, the standard method of procurement? Okay.
It's not current emergency procurement.
Okay, so what is the RFP? Is there a number identifying information about the RFP?
The RFP is posted on the Department of Homeless Services website. I'd be happy to provide that to the board.
Uh, yeah, if you would provide that. How many bidders were there?
So the open request proposals, the provider submitted the request for this site and this project. There was a single proposal.
And how was this provider slash location chosen?
The way that our process works, we have terms of the RFP that are set forth. Again, happy to share that link. And the provider submits a response based on the provisions set forth in that open-ended RFP. And it goes before a rating committee. And it's determined to be sufficient to meet the needs of the agency and the services to clients, and the proposal is accepted.
Okay, was there a public hearing regarding the contract?
Uh, there's not a registered contract yet, but all of our contracts do go before mocks for a public hearing, yes.
Um, did ICL submit written notification to CB2 of their intent to operate a homeless shelter prior to submitting an application to the Department of Homeless Services?
That's not required under the RFP. The notification process happens upon the awarding of the RFP, at which point, as I mentioned, we make calls to our local elected officials, the community board, and follow up in writing with the details of the proposal. And then we've had subsequent meetings and then coming before the board tonight.
So your answer is no, correct? To my question? Yeah. Um, so, and my, my last question is, did you just publish quarterly solicitations in the city record, copies of the RFP?
Um, I will have to check with our ACCO's office.
Okay. Yes, I'd like the answer to my question. Also, the fair share analysis, the environmental impact statement and the contract, do you have copies of that or those completed?
They're not finalized yet due to the state of the project, the status of the project.
So who would we get copies from? Who do we request? What person in particular? Would you provide a name and a phone number of a person we could contact to get that information?
So when the fair share is completed, it is circulated. The contract is publicly available. They can, you can reach out to our ACCO's office. Again, the contract's not finalized, so it's not yet made available. But when it is finalized, it's a publicly available document. Prior to COVID, individuals come down to our offices at Four Wheel Trade Center to be able to, to view that contract. During COVID, we've been able to set up remote viewing for such purposes.
And what other sites were considered?
Uh, this is a proposal specific to the site for, by ICL.
So no other sites were considered?
Not in regards to this response, no.
Would that be considered a sole source?
No.
If there were no other locations, that this was tailored for this location, the RFP?
Right, so the, again, happy to share the, the link for the open-ended RFP, but it's not considered a sole source solicitation.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you, Alex.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try, I'm going to, just again, I'm asking everyone, it's, it's almost coming up on two hours and on this subject and on the media. So I'm trying to get us to the end. The end is in sight, believe it or not. I'm trying to get us there diplomatically as I can. So there are a few board members who had some challenges trying to connect and log on. Antoinette Balzano, did you, are you able to hear me? Did you want to say something? Yes or no? No. Okay, all right. Michael Lanzin, did you spoke or did you want to say something different than what you've already heard? If not, we request your indulgence. Go ahead. You're on mute, Mike. You're on mute.
Okay, so the only thing that I wanted to say, the, the only thing that I wanted to say is, one of the folks here from the city, you know, said that, you know, obviously, all humans, we need to have compassion. And, you know, and I'm going to agree with that because all human beings need compassion. But this is a question that I have. The people that live here in Grassmere, these single-family homes that are in this residential area, that are sending their children to St. Joseph Hill, okay? Where this area is this high traffic intersection. Where is the compassion for these people that are breaking their butts to work, to pay taxes, to maintain their homes, that to get speeding tickets every five seconds on cameras that are nowhere near school zones? Where is the compassion for these people? Now, I can't fault you folks here. I understand you have a job to do. But I just find it unbelievable that, I don't think anyone on this Zoom call, there might be 30 of us on here. I don't think there was a single one of us that would either rent an apartment, buy a home, and move in sight unseen. And I just find it very disheartening that the key to getting somewhere, the key to bringing down the temperature with folks anywhere in this world is communication. And there is zero communication. I don't understand why the elected officials that we voted for were not met at that site with the powers that be. Yes, you don't have to meet with us, we're residents. But us residents and us citizens have elected our local officials that live here, that take the temperature here, that are here to listen to their community. And we have people who have never even been here, forgive me, preaching to us about how we have to be more open and inviting when these same individuals have never even come here to see it, to look around. I'm going to say, I respect the job you have to do. I really firmly believe that if you guys met our elected officials and you took a look at this, I don't firmly believe that any of you in good conscience would be able to still continue to support this. That's really all I want to say.
Thank you, Mike.
I want to thank our local elected officials for trying to stand up and trying to communicate. I just wish this wasn't so one-sided. Communication takes two sides, and we don't feel like we're getting the communication back from City Hall.
Thank you, Michael. All right, um, I think I pretty well covered it. So we have a minute or so, Mr.
Antoinette wants to speak.
How do you, is any?
If Deborah, I replied to you, Antoinette.
She can't because I. Say anything, it's yours not, please let us know. You're on mute. Mr. Nenavaji.
Yes.
Frank? Yes, if you wanted to say something, I have, you have a few minutes. Go ahead. If you wanted to say anything, otherwise, if you have it covered, then just, that's fine, too.
I know. You have it covered. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask something, a question.
Who is that, please?
This is Ben Damano.
Okay, Ben, one second. I just want to get, we're trying to track Antoinette. Antoinette, are you here with us or not? Because if not, we're going to move on. All right, Ben, yours, a minute.
Yeah, I'd like to ask the agency, do you know who owns this property?
The developer that we're working with is.
Who owns the property that you're going to put this facility on?
I believe the developer is the landlord of this place.
Does he have a name?
He does. I'm going to get it for you right now. I have it corrected here. Just bear with me. I'm scrolling through.
I'm happy to say it out loud.
Okay, go ahead.
That's an interesting.
The name of the, the name of the company I misspoke earlier, I apologize, is Bay Rock Capital.
Yeah. Bay Rock, right, okay.
It just seems that, you know, you guys take a site sight unseen, what a developer that also owns the property, it sounds a little wrong to me.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, sir. All right, that will close the public session. We do have, at this point in time, we do have some agency representative announcements. Jermaine Williams, Frank Fontana, and Jahi Rose, that are announcements, which I think are unrelated to the presentation at hand. And if time permits. And, um, if time permits, we will entertain that. If not, in my role as, as chair, we're going to hold over those items uh, for the next meeting and if there's something they want to share with Debbie, please email it to them. Um, and we'll get it into the next meeting minutes. Having said that, um, all of the conversation, question and answer period, um, with regard to the New York City Department of Homeless Services Institute uh, for Community Living, a social service provider, will discuss Mayor de Blasio's plan to open a women's shelter at ten fifty-five Highland Boulevard is now closed. Um, with that, we will take a vote on this and, um, go from there. Alright, Teresa, you're still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. Alright, so this is in regard to, and I will repeat it one more time. Uh, New York City Department of Homeless Services and the Institute for Community Living, ICL, social service provider, um, to provide a plan, a women's shelter at ten fifty-five Highland Boulevard. The plan is to open a shelter for fifty women age fifty plus at ten fifty-five Highland Boulevard, Staten Island, New York. Vote yes if you're in favor of the project advancing and vote no if you're not in favor of the project advancing. Teresa, I'll go last.
AJ. Babashkin.
Are you here, Mr. Babashkin? Yes, we need to see you and with a thumbs up or a thumbs down, where are you? So I gotta get, we gotta get this right. Okay, thank you.
No.
Oh.
No. She's a thumbs down.
Okay. We didn't see AJ, right? His picture's there, but I don't see anything from him. Uh, Clift?
No.
Cognata?
Absolutely no.
Diamato?
No.
Dolan?
No.
Freeman?
No.
Barleesi? Roy? Genovese? Fred?
No.
Kang, not here. Khalid? Dr. Khalid? Lillian?
Khalid is here.
Lillian says no.
No? Okay. Lillian, no? No.
Dr. Khalid?
No. Dr. Khalid is no.
Okay, Lanza?
No.
No.
Markowski?
No.
McNamara?
No.
Nivagi?
No.
Pacifici? Robert?
No.
Raju?
No.
Rigerio?
No.
Santoro?
Not entitled.
Okay, Semenera?
No.
Rob isn't here, no. Latarico? Steven?
Steven, are you here?
Zaboyinsky?
No.
Okay. AJ's not here, right?
Perel is here. Perel, no.
Okay, he's a no. Anybody I missed?
Sorry, Joe. I just noticed that.
Twenty-three opposed, one not entitled.
Alright, so the motion has not passed and as far as community board two is concerned, we are not in favor of this project advancing. There will be correspondence from district manager, I suppose, with my signature, uh, to the appropriate city agent. I want to thank the applicant and the representative from the city making their presentation. And I want to also thank all of the board members and the guests we've had here tonight. It was a very, very good conversation. We had a lot of good questions. And believe me when I tell you, if I missed somebody's comment, I could assure you.
I didn't get your vote.
Um, no, I thought you said Robert, Robert. Okay, no. Um, it wasn't intentional, which I'm trying to scan as I'm trying to track the rest of the stuff that, that I see too here, so. Believe me, it wasn't intentional, but everything in the chat box will be part of the public record. The meeting will be recorded, so I want everybody to know that. With that, as I stated before, my role as the chair, any other items from Jermaine, Frank and Jahi Rose, will be held over, if not intended to the record. If there's something they want to submit to community board two, please do so. Otherwise, for the June meeting, um, you'll have your opportunity to update us on information that you may have for us. And I wish to thank everybody. With that, is there any new business?
No, I would just like to say on Saturday, board wanted, having a protest against our shelter.
Okay, I saw, yeah, there was an email that came around, Joe. Debbie shared that with all of us. Thank you. And welcome to community board, Joe, CB2, Joe. I don't know if you ever have been here with us before.
It was a good meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Um, any new business, one more time? Okay, any old business? Better be good. Any old business? Alright, motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Michael Lanza, thank you. Second, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We will see you at the June meeting. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Nice to meet you all.
Thank you.
Mark, thank you for your excellent technology, Mark. It worked well. Appreciate that. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Alright, bye-bye. Any complaints, let Debbie know, right, please?